First thing we have. The first thing we have is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I will ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice. Oh, thank you Nicole for putting the flag up. I think it was you, wasn't it?
It's Emily. She's leading our PowerPoint today.
Emily, thank you so much. You know, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a history teacher, was a history teacher. And protocol says that you, you recite the pledge facing the flag. And when we've been doing our Zoom meetings, we really haven't had a flag, which is why I said, we'll just recite it. But Emily, thank you very much. All right. Next thing I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go through the list. And Savannah, maybe you could help me. We don't have anybody from Ansoni, is that correct?
We do not.
And Beacon Falls, we don't have Ray, I think he's, he's the.
No.
Bethlehem, Gary Giordano, we don't have him. Uh, Cheshire. Gilbert Lindner. Derby, Gino, do we have Gino tonight?
I'm here, yep.
Oh, hi, Gino.
How are you?
Good. And you?
I'm doing well. I just, I just signed in, so.
You there?
Yes.
So, I'm sorry.
But damn, you're Gino. I know I got a message Kurt Bosco is not going to be here this evening. Lori, I saw you. From Nagatuck. Uh, Oxford, we don't even have a representative from Oxford, I believe.
We do not.
Okay, Plymouth, Margus, but I haven't heard anything from Margus. I don't think he's here this evening, right?
Right.
Gil, uh, well Prospect, we've got actually Gil, Gravlin, and Peter Hughes. Either of which is here tonight. Uh, Seymour. I think we have Mike Arganski. He's not here this evening. And Shelton, Ginny, I know you're here. And Southberry, Tim McNeil.
I'm, I'm here.
Okay. Hey, Tim, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Is your husband Tim?
He is not. My husband and I actually don't share our same last names.
Okay, I'm just asking because I sat with somebody from Southberry. And I mentioned you and they said, is that, is that Tim's wife? I said, I don't care.
Yep, so no, but I certainly hope that, that Tim's a wonderful fellow with a, with an amazing wife.
Oh, I. I hope so too. Thomaston, I know Stacy texted in that she's not going to be present tonight. Any chances Tom Mueller here online? No. Uh, Bob, I know you're here.
Yeah, I'm here.
And Dan DeVito from Watertown texted that he's not gonna be here. And Woodford, Woodbury, Bob Clark. Speak up, Bob, if you're here. No? Okay. Well, that does present a problem, sort of, because we, I do not report a quorum of eight. So, uh, we won't be able to take any votes this evening.
There was an email from someone that said that they couldn't attend, but if there was a, a quorum was needed to.
Yeah, that, that was Stacy. I think it was Stacy. Said that she would be willing to commit if we needed a, a quorum. Uh, we could call her, but it's still not gonna make a quorum.
Well, I have seven, yeah.
All right. We're gonna move on. We have a public comment. I don't know if we have anybody this evening online from the public.
We did not.
No. All right, moving on to administrative items. We have adoption of the June 6th minutes, which we cannot do. So we'll postpone that for our next meeting, which should be in December, I believe. And moving on to referrals report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Everyone should have received the referrals report from May 31st through September 25th. Um, we identified our reference number, municipality, date received, type, adjacent municipalities, regional significance, and then a description of the referral. Does anybody have any questions about the report or any of the referrals that they've reviewed since our last meeting?
Anybody? I, I would like to comment. It's, I know the referrals all come with Patricia Bruder's name attached to it. But I, I, I think it's absolutely wonderful. The fact that you guys are keeping us informed as to what's going on in the other communities. I don't, I, I'm, I'm just gonna be positive and assume that everybody takes a minute to read over these referrals. They don't always have any meaning to us in other communities, but it is often nice to know what's going on. Um, anything else Savannah with referrals?
No, you will note now though that I'm back in the referral seat. Sometimes I add a little additional comments about suggestions. Again, I just want to reiterate everything we put in the referrals advisory. But we try to, when we can, suggest ways for regional partnership and, and good siding. Add, add little recommendations.
Very good. And do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Correspondence. This could be a very quick meeting, everybody. Um, the next item is Regional Planning Commission Discussion. Uh, I don't know, Savannah, you gonna handle that?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We, I'm gonna first defer to my colleague Jack Di Oliveria, who did some research to kind of go over the past history of where regional planning commissions come from. As we reorganize into the Community Planning Division, we want to take a moment and look back, look at where we are now, and then examine how we move forward as a commission and the best ways that we can serve you. So that's really the heart of the conversation we're trying to get to today. So with that, I'd like to defer to Jack.
Thank you, Savannah Nicole. I appreciate it. And just to, thank you. Just introduce myself to everyone. My name is Jack Di Olivera and I'm a planner with NVCOG. Um, and I'm just gonna take you through a pretty brief, high level overview today of the history and evolution of the planning, regional planning commissions in Connecticut. Uh, if we can go to the next slide, please. Next slide, please. And as we see here, the evolution of Connecticut, uh, planning commissions have been over a hundred years now. So to begin, under current state law, municipalities are allowed to establish three types of regional planning organizations. All three of them have the same type of authority with respect to regional planning activities. However, they differ with regards to the range of responsibilities they each have and the authorities that they each hold. So currently only one of these types are still currently statutorily allowed, and that will be the COG format, which we have. So first, as we see the 1917 date, and I did go back and try to add some photos here, so we see the legislation on the left. So Connecticut passed its first planning legislation in 1917, where towns were given the authority to create regional planning commissions to just map and plan for public buildings, highways, streets, and building lines. So there was not much in their purview at the beginning. Um, furthermore, in the 1925, uh, towns were authorized to establish zoning authorities to regulate the height and size of buildings, the, the proportion of a lot, uh, that could be occupied, and as well as the size of yards and open spaces. As we see here in 1947, this is when the first piece of legislation was passed by the General Assembly that allowed for two or more contiguous towns with planning commissions to form a regional planning authority. Each of these regional planning authorities would have to prepare a plan of development for its region base with the same types of studies required for the municipal plan of development. And then it also had to include recommendations for general use of the area and other matters deemed beneficial for the area. So these regional planning authorities were also to assist planning commissions, uh, members in carrying out their regional plan. And then furthermore, in 1959, in order to create a regional planning authority, the number of towns were defined within the area, and then it had to be at least 60% of the possible representation on the board. As we see here in number two, the General Assembly further adapted the format. And then in 1965, legislation required the direct involvement of elected chief executives from each member town. That is why CEOs are represented. Under this law, two or more towns with any state identified planning region can decide to establish a regional council of elected officials. And that is not really existing anymore, because as we see here in number three, via the 1971 legislation, this was passed for the establishment of a COG structure, COG structure, which we have now. So this structure can be established within any state-defined planning organization, planning region, as long as 60% of the towns pass an ordinance at the municipal level. In cases where the previous two existed, so we previously had a regional council of elected officials or a regional planning authority, these ceased to exist in the COG that was the format that went forward. So initially, this is the, via this legislation in 1971, regional planning commissions were actually established as well, and we're gonna discuss that on the next slide if we can go forward.
And Mr. Chairman, just to add, Jack and I had to get library cards from the state of Connecticut. We had to send our information and, and promise to be good. So these came not even from the local. We had to really go through state records to get the stuff for you guys.
I'm very happy for you. Thank you.
And I will let you know, it, it was fun to see the evolution of this, because it's interesting seeing how legislation comes to be and kind of who the public speakers are at them. So it, it was fun to kind of do this project. Um, so getting to the core of the Regional Planning Commission, so as I said, it was established in the 1971 legislation. And I'll let, the, the exact section is here on the screen for you all, so you can read it if you'd like, but to just summarize, um, within the 1971 legislation, it, it included specific language to create an RPC. And the legislation required that each COG have an RPC to carry out the planning duties and responsibilities for each defined planning region. That included the regional plan of development and the review of certain zoning and subdivision matters. If we can go on to the next slide, please. So that structure existed for a while, but as we see, there was modifications that were made to the RPC statutory requirements. Um, so in 2000, via Public Act 2054, this allowed for COGS to carry out its planning and planning duties and responsibilities on its own, instead of through an RPC. These duties included formulating a regional plan of development. And the act allows, rather than requires, the bylaws of the COG to include provisions for organizing a regional planning commission. The bylaw, the commissioners are subdivisions of the COG and act on behalf of the COG. As you see in the middle of the screen, members, um, so just to reiterate there, membership is now, membership for RPCs are now optional, and they are considered subdivisions of the COGS. So as we move on to the 2015, what legislation did, and it took effect, was via PA 13247, and it became effective on the 1st of January 2015, the language governing RPCs was officially removed from statute. This means that RPCs now are not in statute anywhere, but instead operate through and on behalf of COG bylaws. The RPCs are now only established and operate via the bylaws of the COG, and nowhere are they found in the Connecticut general statutes. Therefore, they're not governed overall by the statute, by Connecticut, but therefore by the COG. So moving on to the current status, there's only one current type of regional planning organization that is still allowed, and that is the Regional Council of Governments. And that RPCs are not required by Connecticut general statutes and only exist via our COG bylaws currently. And that concludes my presentation at the moment. I appreciate your guys' time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. I have a question. Am I reading that correctly, that only NVCOG has RPGs?
No, that is. Go ahead. Stop listening to Nicole answering those questions.
Well, there are nine councils of governments, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah, there's nine councils of governments, but we are one of the last COGS that still has an RPC model. Because in 2015, when that was removed from the statute, most COGS didn't move forward with, I think that they still have ways to engage staff and ways to engage commissioners, but they're not doing it through this model anymore. And so, yeah.
Very interesting. Jack, question, yes.
Yeah, Jack, I was just gonna ask, is it possible to get a copy of this PowerPoint? I, I find it very interesting. I, it's, uh, amazing how, you know, the, the advent of regional planning sort of came on just as county government in Connecticut was, uh, was ending. Which I think was probably the late 50s, maybe 1960.
Yeah, I, I don't think this would be a problem, but I will defer, of course, to Savannah and Nicole here.
Of, of course, Commissioner Nairney will share it via a PDF, but you're right. I think, I mean, can't speak to the legislature, but when the counties were moving, they were looking for other ways to still maintain some of those functions, and I think that this was part of that balancing. But, so we wanted to look past, but we still want to talk about, as Jack mentioned, you do exist in our bylaws. So Emily, can you go to the next slide, please? So, in our operating procedures, I know that they're the bottom piece, but I want to talk about that before I snap back up to the top. As Jack kind of mentioned in his language about the RPC serving as an entity, as a subdivision of the Council of Governments, it says in our purpose that we're here to conduct the business of the commission, with the commission being the North American Valley Council of Governments. And that's our board. And so in our NVCOG board bylaws, our planning duties and responsibilities shall include, but are not limited to, oversight of plans and studies, addressing referrals concerning land use regulations and other matters, the development of recommendations concerning a regional plan of conservation and development, the development of recommendations concerning federally funded mandated long-range transportation plan, and then other commissions as were given by the council. But can you do next slide for me, please, Emily? I'm aware, I mean, we've, a lot of us have been here for a while. A lot of us have been here for a lot longer than I have. I can acknowledge that there's things on that list that maybe we have done well, maybe we have not done well, maybe we have not ever done. And so we want to have a conversation, an honest conversation, an open conversation with you all today about the ways in which the RPC is a good model to move forward with, or if we should be considering other ways to make sure that we're engaging commissioners, engaging staff. So I've got three kind of subsets of questions, Chairman, if it's okay through you. Emily, let's only keep the first one up for now. But we want to talk to you about how you feel about the commission, and, and this is kind of that first question. Do you feel we've been proactive at meeting our duties and responsibilities? And I've outlined them all, and they, we'd like to hear from you on how you feel we've achieved or have not achieved these.
Not sure.
I have a.
Go, go ahead, please.
I was just curious, and, and I think this might help frame the discussion as well. How do other NVCOGs deal with regional plans of conservation and development, or do they not make them at all?
They make regional plans of conservation and development. They don't use regional planning commissions to review the plan with. And so sometimes they have advisory committees that are of planners, and advisory committees of commissioners, but they don't have them together in this format. They're separated entities, which a benefit from our perspective is allows for more targeted conversations, allows for more targeted education. But that's our perspective, and so we wanted to come together. We still have to do all of this regardless of the RPC functions. Our bylaws just have you as another entity that reviews or is involved with this process with us.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anybody else? Uh, Nicole, I, I have something I want to add, and I'm not sure if it directly relates to, uh, what you are specifically looking for. I've become very dismayed that we don't ever seem to be able to count on a quorum. We have a couple of towns where we don't even have a representative. And, uh, I, I would hope that we could maybe look at some ways of encouraging towns to, uh, have a representative, which would show up. I mean, we don't do our meetings in, in person anymore, which I could understand if you're going to ask people to meet in Waterbury. That means travel, that's gonna limit some people. But Zoom, there shouldn't be any reason why we can't get at least a representative from each of the communities. I don't think the effectiveness of the RPG can be fulfilled unless we can get a, a quorum, a better representation from the towns.
Chairman White, we entirely agree, and I will comment on it, but Commissioner Hardger has also been involved with the Regional Planning Commission for a while, I believe. And so if you have anything to add or fill in here too. A quorum has always been an issue. I believe that a quorum was even still an issue when we were in person, which led to, we have this wonky way that we calculate a quorum for ours. And like, if people don't have a commission, if they don't have a representative, it doesn't count towards our quorum. And it's, it's an odd system that we can't, we need a chief elected official to nominate someone to serve on a regional planning commission. And so we, every time, we can do more outreach, but we've gone down that path. And, and we, the regional planning commission seems to cycle to this place, which makes us wonder, is this, again to the questions, is this the right model to be doing what we're trying to do? And can we be doing it in a different model that still gives you all this information, but doesn't require the quorum? Or maybe meets in a different type of way, or engages you on things you actually want, as opposed to us coming together to check, sometimes check things off?
I, I know you're looking to us, uh, to add to this discussion. Do you, Savannah, have any suggestions as to how we could maybe become more effective?
Yeah, Emily, do you mind switching down to, can you click it twice more? So we have a bunch of suggestions, and I put them down, and maybe that's a better place to start, is that, um, we have another model at our organization, and I'll defer also to Jack, because he is on the transportation team. So if he's got anything to add, please feel free to do so as well. But we have what we call a Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, and they come together as staff. And I want to see two types of advisory committees that aren't tied to a quorum, aren't tied to an open meeting process, although we probably will still record, we'll probably still have this sort of space, because I think it's beneficial. But we want to bring you together when the transportation team has a plan that they need to engage you on. We want to bring you together as we work on the regional plan of conservation and development. And while I, I like the round tables, I find them heartwarming to hear what everybody's working on. I don't know how, I, I'd like to know how beneficial that is for you and the rest of your commission, because Molly, she's, you'll meet her after. For the Saturday training, she added to our, our breakfast time, like a braggy brunch, like encouraging commissioners to talk about what's going well. Like, we want to see you engage with one another in a deeper way than just, hey, we're doing this in our region. And if we can, I have here networking events for commissioners to come together to discuss best practices. We don't do the RPC, but we've got an advisory committee that we tap when we've got projects. And we do an educational dinner, once, one in person and one hybrid every year. We, we want to see you bump shoulders. We want to see you break bread. We want to see you talk about the things you're go, you're doing. We want to know what you want help with, as opposed to us just coming to you every other month saying, hey, we want to talk to you about X, or hey, we want to talk to you about Y. So I've, like, I went over the first two. Both as needed. We want to do recorded educational opportunities that we, we, we reach out to Commissioner Rotella, reach out to Commissioner Nairney, who are staff in our region, to say, what do you want? And we can still offer it to commissioners to attend and visit, but we want to do things that commissioners want as well. We want to tap you, send you surveys to say, maybe, maybe Commissioner Rotella and Commissioner Nairney really want to know planning for noise. But maybe all of the commissioners are saying, you know, we still have a lot of ex parte communication. We could use a FOIA conversation. We want to go over a certain aspect of Robert's rules, or we're dealing with a ton of warehousing stuff. Can we get some help and knowledge there? We just think that this model doesn't allow us to really target each group's needs in a beneficial way. So we've got a bunch of suggestions, and I, I will, I'll highlight one more before I stop talking. We still want to share referrals. We know that, I'm, I'm happy that you said that you liked them, Commissioner White. We want to find a way, though, that they don't just go to you guys. We want to find a way to put them on our website, put the information in somewhere so that anybody can access it, because it's a small group that knows what's going on right now. And if that could benefit your staff, that could benefit your commissioners, that could benefit your community. We want to be more open about that sort of information.
That's actually, is it okay if I interrupt?
Yes, please.
That's actually what I've, what I've been thinking about during, while you're, while you were speaking is, what's the value that we're bringing back to our communities from being part of the Regional Planning Commission? Because I think that's going to be a deciding factor of whether or not people are going to be participating as fully as, as we could, right? I really enjoy what I get out of being part of the Regional Planning Commission. I enjoy the amount of information that we get, even though I know it's sometimes the second or third time you've sent it to someone in our town. But I still love to be able to make sure that, uh, people that might need it are getting it. And that they know that if they had some questions, that I might be able to help out and get that information forth, based on contacts from the NVCOG. I don't know that the Regional Planning Commission has to be the only way that that happens, but that's certainly something that I enjoy about it.
Yeah. I have a couple of comments and questions.
First of all, I, I apologize. Who was just speaking?
Me.
Oh, that was Kim.
Oh, that was Kim.
I could, I scrolled through everybody. I couldn't figure out who was talking. Thank you, Kim.
So one of the questions I have is, how many representatives are we missing?
Tonight?
No, oh, out of all of the municipalities who are a part of the regional, uh, the COG, how many do not have reps?
Two. Two.
Only two, okay.
We, we don't have anybody from Oxford. We don't have anybody from Volker.
Okay.
And we've got some, excuse me.
Yeah, I was just jotting down some things. And one of the things I was wondering is, does, is everybody clear on what the expectation is for the Regional Planning Commission? What impact do we have when it comes to the COG? On a slightly different topic, the, the Zoom meetings, while they're very convenient, they tend to be sterile, and there's something having, something to be said about when we had the, the NVCOG was down in Derby, and the six or seven of us got together, that you had a lot more camaraderie in the room. So, but I think that one of the most important things is what I started off with, is what is the expectation for the Regional Planning Commission? What are we exactly supposed to be doing? Are there, what authority do we have to do things, um, when it comes to the NVCOG? I think that's a very gray area.
Sure. And Commissioner Hardger, thank you so much. You, all of your power is advisory, so the answer is, is there's, in this model, there's no power. It's recommendations on. In this model, there's no power. It's recommendations on plans and studies. That ultimately, I mean, in my two and a half years here, I have seen us not be, and by us, I mean, NV cog staff. Have not been successful in properly bringing before the commission and I think that's on our side of things. In terms of what your task to do. I don't, I don't, I don't know if I think in my professional opinion that this is the model exactly like you're saying. If this is the place to, if you don't mind going back Emily to the two slides. So keep going, keep going, keep going, right here. Um, oop, sorry, one more. Um. This side.
Come on.
Thank you. Um, we, I, I want to, and I want to be clear, we still want commissioners involved with the regional plan of conservation and development. We don't want to not see you involved in these tasks. We just don't know if bringing you together in this way. Not involving additional members of your communities, additional commissioners is really getting at. Reaching recommendations or if this is the way to do it, as previously Joanna and Josh were going out into the communities. I think it's more effective when we're there. I think it's more effective when we're at your commission and we have stuff to show you that way. Um. But I like the elbow rubbing and I like the breaking bread and I think that that's equally as important. And I don't want to, I don't want to see the, I want to know what you guys are interested in, but I would never allow the regional planning commission to see success. Without having educational opportunities and networking spaces for commissioners and staff to still get. Those opportunities in our region and in our model. And so it's a, not a great answer, but your power is to advise. And we, yeah.
Savannah, Nicole, has there ever been any discussion on the staff level with other cogs in the state? Are they running into the same issue?
They're not, they don't use this model anymore.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And they do a lot of the advisory committees, which is what our transportation has moved, our transportation team has moved to. Which is more of a, we pull you together, hey, we've got a plan coming. We want to see you in two months. Here's a document, here's things we're working through. It's, it's not set up in this way. Uh.
Savannah, uh, I know on Fridays, uh, there is a gathering.
Yes, of the, the board.
The board. Is that uh adequately attended?
Yes, the chief elected officials do come for their, their meeting and they are able to meet quorum.
I, I think it would be great if, if the, the board uh was able to reach out individually. To their uh zoning and planning commissions. What's, what's being discussed or what's being done.
Uh, we can most certainly do that again. We have done that before and I, to the technical late nature. We've been at this place of no quorum and so we can, we'll most certainly do that again, but. Is, are people set on the regional planning commission as a model? Would people be interested in other suggestions? More concrete suggestions that we could discuss maybe in December about different iterations? We could reorganize into, I, I.
I, I think, can I speak? I think that would be a better idea if we waited till December only because then we can all go back and really think about it and talk about it. Within our communities or our commissions. I like when you come out to our towns. You've done a lot of good with our commission. Savannah Nicole has been there, uh, Rich, Richard has came out and they've done um presentations for us. We're in the middle of our. Planning, um, our uh plan of conservation and development and they've been a huge help with us. We haven't, we don't have a. Um, we didn't hire a independent subcontractor. Sorry. I'm not at my house. I'm at a party. I'm down here. It's, can't think straight. But anyways. We're um, they've done a lot of work for us, I felt. And I kind of like that model better. It, you know what I mean? Where you come out to us. I don't know if these meetings are giving us a lot. I do like these meetings. But how do we get more people here? So I think if we think about it for next month. And then we decide.
I, I think that's.
Four, haven't we voted on this before? If we're going to meet every other month or once a quarter?
Yep, because we, we used to meet every, every month and it was in person.
Yep.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is uh Drew Backlook. I'm with the cog as well. I'm fairly new with the cog, but I'm the director of municipal affairs. And I could just tell you all that this is not unique to your group as it relates to trying to gather volunteers uh for anything. So we're struggling with this across a, a bunch of different things. So I think that's why uh to SN's credit, she's trying to bring it to you to say, hey. What, what value are we adding to you and what can we do to make it easier and better? Uh, I love what Commissioner Harder said about, let, let's try to get people in the room. Uh, I think that is definitely uh. More effective, more impactful and, and Savannah Nicole was super successful in her commissioner training. Uh, with her staff a couple of weeks ago in Ansonia. I think we're trying to go that route to do more things like that. Uh, but I also wanted to comment just to say I'm very impressed with Commissioner Rotella taking the meeting from a party. That is true dedication.
Well, happy. It's for Savannah Nicole.
That was very nice of you.
I care, you all know how much I care about you all and that's why I bring this. It'd be a lot easier just to keep moving in the model that we have. But I want to be value added to you all. And if we're not being value added, I want to find a way to do that. And so to Commissioner Harder's point. Are we going to have a better opportunity of getting everybody in the room if commissioners across the region know? We're going to have a nice dinner at a nice place in the region once a year and we've got speaker and we, we bring, we let. I don't know, I'm spitballing, but we let chair, chair people of the commissions kind of talk about what they've done over the year. Or we poll the room to figure ahead of time something they want to learn about and, or it's a breakfast or whatever it is like. Are we going to be, are we going to be more value added to you, connecting you that way, rubbing shoulders, pumping fists? Chatting that way, swapping emails, um, doing educational things that you can either watch as a commission. Or to what Commissioner Rotella said, we have three new members of our community planning staff. That want to come to your commissions, that want to be jazzed and talk about whatever issues you're facing with you. And so if, if this model isn't serving you and, and I appreciate Commissioner Rotella's point about, we gotta sleep on it. But if you, if you come back and, and we're not being value added. Our staff will come up with different suggestions about ways we think we can be better value added. But we didn't want to just keep the cart moving because it was moving. Because the wheels have fallen off a few times and we've glued things back on and, and we just want to. It means a lot to me to serve you and I take that seriously and I don't know if this model is serving you.
I would have to say that um there's such a, a, a lot of effort being put into. Everything that uh from Waterbury and I just wish we could go back to the days when we had a smaller cog. Um, I just cannot at my stage in life be driving up to Waterbury. And that's why the, the um Zoom format is very helpful, but I really liked. When it, we, we had a um, the cog was in the lower North Tuck Valley, one was in Derby and that was a hop, skip and a jump for me to get to and, and um. Four or five communities that were involved in it had very good attendance and uh we went over a number of things. I just think it's, it's gotten too big and I don't understand why it had to be combined and enlarged the way it is. Um, the issues that you might have up in um Watertown. It may not be the same kinds of things that we're addressing down in the valley. So. I don't know if that had anything to do with it, that there were just the interests just. We, we don't see things happening that are uh that really um impact us. Or resonate with us.
Uh Jenny, would, would it, would it make any difference if we took Savannah's suggestion? And instead of our format that we have now, if we did like once a year?
It'd be worth a, a shot, you know?
I, I, I personally, I get more out of personal uh contact. I, I, I accept the, the Zoom meetings. They, they, they're okay. But I really feel we get more benefit when we can all be in person.
Now, one of the things I had um suggested uh here at the city level was for. Each town in a way to have a walking tour because uh. You hear a lot from me about all the stuff going on in Shelton, but how many towns do you have a chance to drive through unless you're one of our budding towns? Um, it, I think it may be easier for us to understand what's going on in other municipalities. If we actually had the ability to have a, 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 a day where we could visit. Um, and then you lay the land.
Yep.
Lovely idea. And if, if we move and we're taking notes, I just want you to know that. We're going to go back to the drawing board. So in December, we'll be able to put stuff in front of you. We switch to a model that maybe wasn't the regional planning commission, but like was a, a celebratory and educational place. For commissioners at least once a year in a nice setting. But to your point, Commissioner Harder. We spent the time that we spend trying to muddle through the RPC, trying to come up with. Better enriching opportunities for connection. So like, like you said, maybe we have. Shelton's Planning and Zoning Commission has formally invited you to a walking tour on this date and. And we will, we bring whoever wants to come across the region and we can do those sorts of things. Hmm, that's a, yes, yeah, I'm, I'm repeating now, but.
No, that's okay.
Do you think people don't like to come at night? Like I, I had a meeting last night planning, tomorrow's wetlands. Do you think others are just thinking, oh, because they probably have the same kind of meetings. It's just another meeting that they don't find. They need to be there. So there it's easier to say, I'm not going to be.
Hmm.
Do you know?
And we.
What's the incentive for them to be there?
Commissioner Rotella, and that's where we want to also offer something for our region's land use staff, which both you and Commissioner Narnie are. So that we're not asking, we'd love for you to come to commissioner related things as well. Um, but we, we want to be able to ask you to do things during your work day so that you're not staffing commission meetings and then doing this. And same thing for commissioners. If we have a much, we have a large enough part of our population that are retired. And so if we could do daytime and evening options and, and sprinkle them so that we offered things, we did hybrid opportunities. We want to find ways to meet people where they are without them having to be in this room at six thirty. Every other month.
Hmm. I think the biggest help that um NV cog could do for me personally and a. Hopefully this is it, is in your wheelhouse, but when the new legislative session comes up. For an analysis of the potential land use bills that are being proposed. Um, we don't have the time to be going through all that. I think that is more on the cog level that should be done. And to, you know, very objective kind of analysis of this is what's proposed and this is what the impact could be. And, and uh then if there is a need or a reason why an individual wants to uh be part of a public hearing. Then they can, but uh that's where I would like to see some help.
And those are most certainly the types of suggestions we want today and in our next meeting and it's great because. As Drew introduced himself earlier, he is our um also our legislative person and Jack is also on that team. So these are good things for them to hear, but I want to ask, did you receive our, our land use brief? That we sent out in August. Um, we sent them to your land use staff. I don't know if you all received them. Did you?
I recall.
No. Okay. Emily, can you give me the power to share my screen?
Yeah.
Thank you. I will make sure you get this, but it's not the proactive review that. You are asking for Commissioner Harder.
You should be able to share your screen.
Perfect. Can everyone see this?
Oh, no.
Yes.
Yes, we make, we make these quarterly. It, they, I, we started two quarters ago. Um, the first one was on outdoor dining, talking about the changes in the legislative session about that for May first. Um, this was our August one. We went through all the legislation with help of Jack and Drew. And found every single piece of legislation that, I mean, we can't say we found them all, but we did find tooth, tooth comb. We tried to do it as, as thoroughly as we could. Every zoning change that was enacted during the session, every planning change that was enacted during the session, commissioner changes. And then broader municipal changes that still are kind of in your wheelhouse. So there were. We did this and we wrote out reporting requirements and we have community residence changes that are needed, affordable housing plans. The motor vehicle dealers and repair uses was resolved in this session. Um, it was with DBAs and got ping ponged back and forth for a while. Um, I can make sure that you all get this tomorrow. But we send out these sorts of things as well. This went to your staff, but um. If we can do something that's more commissioner focused and we can get more of your contact information, because that stuff's not readily available. And we totally understand why, but if we can build out a better commissioner infrastructure, we can make sure this is in your inbox as well. Hmm, hasn't been something that we've always done in the past.
Now, that's definitely a, a, a nice publication.
Yep.
You wouldn't necessarily just use the mailing list that would have been used to notify everyone of this meeting?
We sent them to your staff and your chief elected officials, hoping that they would make their way there, but I'm seeing that that's not.
Think I'm going to be, I'll be at City Hall tomorrow. I'll find out what happened to it.
So honestly, we received it and um. Truthfully, it's a little embarrassing, but I didn't even think to give it to our, our um commissions.
No, yeah.
I didn't even think because we take care of all that stuff as staff. So it's a good idea. I could print those out and give them to the commissions.
I tried to make them in a big, I made them, no one likes to read statute. I mean, I do because I'm a nerd. But like, it's not, it's, it's not, there's not ni- it's not formatted nicely. The text is kind of small. So I tried to make a more visual document where it's spaced out and it's concise, but still keeps the statute. In a way that maybe your fellow commissioners would read it. So that's the goal of the brief, but um, we'll be sure you get that.
On my desk. I do have it on my desk, both of them.
We want that. That's our goal, so.
Good. Send me back copies too.
But yeah, so we will think, we'll take everything said today. We also like if you have suggestions in between now and the next meeting that you want to share, you want to call us, you want to talk about. I'll take you out for coffee. I'll do whatever. It'll be on me, my treat. You send me an email, find a time. Um, we want to talk to you about it. We want, we just want to make a better model that act, that we feel serves you and you feel serves you. That's really the heart of what we're trying to do.
I very much appreciate what you're doing Savannah.
Thank you.
And uh, I, I think we have had a good discussion and I agree with Lori. I think we ought to uh. Think about what we've discussed this evening, come up with maybe some additional things that we could consider. And uh put that into our agenda for December.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything that they would like to add at this point before we moved to the next item? Hearing nothing? Then uh the next thing that we have on our agenda is our round table. And uh. I think I'm gonna, excuse me, I think I'm gonna start off and then I'm just going to go through uh our list. In uh, in Bristol, uh, we've got some updates. Our uh renovation of City Hall is now complete. We're hoping that we can begin to have uh offices moved back into the new city hall. I took a tour of it uh two weeks ago and I want to tell you, it's, it's pretty spectacular. Uh, it was done, done, uh, on budget, on time. And uh the end result is just amazing. Um, our, our downtown really now has become our north main street. We've got uh the Wheeler Building that's uh going up uh rapidly. Uh, we have the uh Carrier Project that's going to put apartments. And uh retail on first floor. and uh retail on first floor. That's uh, there's nothing but a big hole in the ground right now, but it will be moving quickly. And uh most importantly, uh we have completed our uh zoning regulation rewrite. And we are scheduling a, a public hearing in November. Uh, and uh we hope that uh by December we'll have that in play. So that's what's happening in my community. Let's see Gina. Is it Gino?
Yep, Mr. Chair Gino from Derby. Thirty-four uh is moving its way. Hopefully uh in the next month or so, they'll be paving the south side and switching the traffic over. So that's moving. Um, the water tower is almost complete. And we haven't had a, uh, last month, we did not have a planning and zoning uh board meeting, so there weren't any new applications there. But uh things are uh moving along and trying to wrap up before the winter.
Gino, thank you very much. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Lori?
We have a couple of good things. We completed finally our affordable housing plan and we're now on the list with OPM as completed. Our um Plan of Conservation and Development actually last night, Planning Commission made a motion to submit it to Cog for their review and comments. So I just have to find out who I send it to tomorrow. And that letter Savannah Nicole, I'll call you tomorrow.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, uh, let me see. Our downtown upgrades are underway. They're redoing all the infrastructure. They're um making it a complete street, widening the sidewalks. So that's started. It's kind of tough on some of the businesses, but we are trying to keep them informed the best we can. We did just have one have to go out. It was too much for them, but we try to keep them updated. Let me see, um our Kind Care Bristol has one also, the Kind Care Assisted Living. I think ours is finally gonna start. We received their bond, so hopefully they're gonna start the construction on ours. Uh, let's see, we had a big application before wetlands, four hundred and sixty-seven apartments and a big parcel of land, but it's probably forty percent wetlands. That's unofficial, but so we have our meeting tomorrow night where we're gonna find it significant and schedule a public hearing. This is the only meeting I've ever had, almost a hundred people come out. So that's gonna be interesting. And then on a fun note, our Fall Festival was canceled a couple of weeks ago due to the rain, so we're gonna reschedule it for October twenty-eighth. It's gonna be a trunk or treat and Fall Festival downtown.
Anything else Lori?
That's it.
Hey Lori, um, you know, I did mention the Kind Care Facility that we have in uh our downtown Bristol area. Uh, but uh I'm very impressed with it and I believe the uh plan is for your community is exactly the same thing that was put up. So I think you're gonna be very happy with it.
Did they do the ribbon cutting or whatever yet?
I, if they did, I'm, I wasn't aware of it. No. I, I know they have a resident already.
Oh, they do. Okay.
Um, see Jenny, what, what's going on in your community?
Oh, what's not going on? Well, um Fountain Square is the new shopping center on Bridgeport Avenue that's been has been being built for the last uh like four years. Um, there was a change in uh backers and they had to uh go through refinancing and, and everything and settle uh issues. Uh, so they're moving along again. Um, we, it, there is a public hearing that's open because of a major modification that has been submitted. Uh, so what I can tell you is that the original concept to have a hotel on that site and an office building has been removed and instead the applicant is requesting the modification for the uh final detailed development plans for a hundred and forty-five apartments. Um, we, on the positive side with it, we have um a number of, of uh tenants that are gonna be moving in. And at the top of the list is good old Chick-fil-A, which should be open in a couple of weeks. Um, so I'm sure that's gonna get a lot of traffic. Um, we do have four other uh projects that are going through the open uh public hearing phase and uh it seems that River Road um is uh the hotspot these days and, and I was waiting for that shoe to drop for sure. But we have um, uh, there's a, um, maybe about ten acres along the water that right now is the site of very rundown warehouses. Um, and it's light industrial zone. Um, but so uh the gentleman who owns the sports center in Shelton, we just further down the road came in and uh filed an application to put up fifty-one condos, townhouse style uh going from River Road down to the river and in a long driveway, private road and also a medical building uh up on the street. And um in another location on River Road, uh we're still in the public hearing stage for a hundred fifty-two apartments, which would be in four buildings. Um, further close on River Road closer to downtown Shelton, we had already approved a project that had twenty, uh thirty-six uh townhouse style units and they're in about six buildings and now that particular um property owner has come back asking for another uh twenty-eight units. So we'll see what turns out with that. Um, we do have uh typical zoning stuff where we have new uh business tenants that come in. Um, and sometimes while they seem to be a perfect fit, the, the zone that they, where they wanna have their um takeover as a tenant isn't necessarily what it's zoned for, so we go through some um changes and uh amendments to our zoning regs. We have the typical in-law setups that come before us still. Um, there, and the because Aquarian is um has a large facility in town where the reservoir is. Uh, we get these quirky things every so often where they wanna replace a water tank and from a two-hundred gallon unit, I guess up to a five-hundred gallon unit. So that has come before us for approval. And uh Aquarian has also been maybe over the time that I've been on the zoning commission, they've been before us four or five times and there's never been a problem. Uh, but on the administrative side, uh we uh staff has recodified our regulations and brought them all up to date. And uh that is something that the commission will be looking at as a whole to make sure that they're, they're okay. And we do have to have a public hearing on that. One of the commissioners approached me earlier in the spring and had asked if we could possibly do um some kind of regulation where we would uh for commercial um operations in town, any commercial applications where they had to be landscaping that the landscape plan would have to be for just native plants and not invasives. And, and this particular commissioner is the person that we always turn to when we're going through site plans to say, is, do you see a problem there? And she will always speak up to say, now, don't use this variety, use this variety. So um it's not, it may not necessarily get to be a firm regulation, but a very strong suggestion this is the list that you should use when you're developing your landscaping plan. And uh we did um earlier in the spring uh approve our affordable housing plan and I will be checking with staff tomorrow because I heard when Lori talked about sending it to NV cog, I said to myself, ooh, I wonder if staff did that. So I, I think Lori for uh speaking up about that. Well, that's about it.
Jenny, thank you very much. I think uh Kim has uh signed out. Uh, so we have uh Bob Nerd.
Yes, um, we, we've been um quite busy and um a couple of things to mention. Um, we actually met with cog representatives to uh coordinate um uh input on the new mix, um, the replacement of the Mixmaster uh planning process that has been underway for the last two years. Uh, from that has evolved a number of preliminary design uh ideas and some of which uh I think both the cog and the city have some concerns with. Um, obviously the existing Mixmaster that comes through the city today is uh is, is uh outdated. It was built in the uh, in the late fifties. It uh cannot support the level of traffic that it was originally designed for. And uh despite the, you know, recent improvements, uh the long range plan is to replace that infrastructure. So I think this is truly a once in a lifetime opportunity to impact the final outcome, whatever whatever selection that might ultimately uh result in. And I think some of our concerns to date has been uh the various models which uh continue to sort of sever the city. In some ways even more pronounced than what exists today, some of the designs, you know, the idea of frontage roads. One of the plans that they seem to be um uh seems to be getting traction is the idea of uh uncoupling the, the double deck uh structure and, and, and uh having two uh eastbound, westbound roads run parallel to each other at a, at a lower elevation, which, which sounds good. Except the, there are, you know, flyovers that will essentially create the same impact, also frontage roads that we we think will just widen that sort of separation, create connectivity issues uh with downtown uh businesses, the hospitals, our, our education facilities, institutional uses uh such as, you know, city offices, um uh, you know, whatnot, response time to uh, to getting to hospitals, uh for instance. So co, uh, the cog took an initial stab at putting together some comments. Uh, I've added to it. Um, my uh assistant also has uh added some comments. We'll be getting that back to you. Oh, probably maybe tomorrow, uh Savannah Nicole. Um, but I think it's something that we should certainly alert Con Dot and their their, their designers uh to, to some of the concerns we, you know, we, we have. Again, it's a really truly a once in a lifetime opportunity to get it right. With that said, uh, we have some, we continue to see robust development in the, in the downtown with the residential uh conversions of uh vacant office space, uh mostly upper level to uh residential uh units. Uh, the city is currently you might have read in today's paper, uh, the um proposal to purchase one exchange place, let's say, you know, lodge a six thousand square foot, six-story building uh on the corner of Bank Street, West Main Street, uh that is um has, has a very high vacancy rate. There are uh tax uh default issues uh, you know, in play. I think, you know, the city's plan, maybe do you possibly temporarily use it for um uh municipal office space. Uh, we're gonna be revitalizing uh the Chase Building on Grand Street, uh and that'll end up displacing uh a number of departments, Board of Education, Human Resources and such. So they may temporarily use uh one exchange place while, while those upgrades are being made. From there on, perhaps the city, you know, I guess we'll decide whether to, to keep it or portion thereof or possibly, you know, market it at some point. Um, similarly, uh, we have another site uh known as Forty Bristol Street. It's a former factory that burned um a number of years ago and uh it's sort of a, a burned out shell of a, of a building. But the city is uh also uh looking to, to purchase um subject to remediation agreements and funding. Uh, but uh the idea is to try to cer, uh reclaim the site and promote something that will be perhaps a little more additive uh to that part of town. Uh, so that's cut, one of the things, um, what else do we have? Just, just uh, you know, an overwhelming amount of permitting. Um, I think I had mentioned last time we had lost the a long um uh person that had been with our department for many years, uh she retired. Uh, so we're down to really just a couple of people. Uh, so it's uh everything from plan review to permitting to try to, you know, maintain some, you know, some of the longer range um uh issues. So it's, it's, it's busy. We're also trying to recruit planners. So I think as I said last time, if you know of anybody who might be interested in starting an entry level position, uh, let me know.
Is the commit, is the application out? I'm going to speak to two college classes in the next month. So if it's out, I will share it with them. Send it to me, please.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna try a different approach to, we're, we're gonna um, it, it's subject to uh our civil service board approving it, which I think they will, but we're gonna create a a funded uh internship position. And you know, the idea is to uh train and retain. You know, perhaps we can bring in, you know, somebody with, you know, that's maybe near graduating with, with some you know, land use experience, even volunteer experience, bring them on board as, as an intern. And uh hopefully try to grow them into a, you know, into a permanent position. Uh, of course, the downside is they could get their experience and leave, go elsewhere. But I guess that's the risk in any, you know, in any workplace today. But we're trying to be creative and it, it's not unique to Waterbury, a lot of communities really throughout the country are, you know, faced with the same thing.
Anything else?
Uh, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Now I think that is everybody. Is there anybody that I missed? Uh Savannah Nicole, the next thing we have on our agenda is community planners introduction.
Yes, so as you saw via email, we have been working on growing our team for a while. And we finally have our full team here. I'm so, so excited about the, the, the professionals we have that are joining us. So I wanna let everybody just take a moment, introduce themselves. They've, I've, we've thrown them into the fire, so now they're good. They know where they're from, where they went to school, what they're working on, what they're most excited about. Um, so Emily, I see you at the top. Do you wanna go first?
Yeah, sure. Um, just make sure everyone can hear me correct.
Yes, we can Emily.
Yeah, all right. So I'm Emily Ritchie. I am a recent May grad from UConn's Masters in Public Administration Program. And I am a brand new community planner here at NV cog, really excited. Um, especially meeting everyone here and really excited to work with everyone. Um, recently I just finished supporting the land use training, trainings the past two days. Really great seeing everyone's familiar faces as well. And yeah, I come from Shelton, so I'm also quite excited for the new Chick-fil-A that's coming out in a couple of weeks. I'll make sure to take, take a photo and share it. But yeah, um, thank you for such a warm welcome and meeting everyone.
Welcome Emily.
Thank you.
Next one I see is Molly.
Hello, um, yes, I'm Molly Johnson. I am a recent graduate from Yale School of the Environment with my Masters of Environmental Management. Also excited to be joining the community planning team. Um, I'm from North Bramford. Also excited to be joining the community planning team. Um, I'm from North Ramford, Connecticut. And um, I guess recently I've been helping working on some land use. Um, challenges, uh, such as like aquifer protection areas and um. Other things in that nature, but I'm looking forward to working with you all and um, yeah, getting to know more about your communities.
Welcome Molly. Uh, who else do we have here? Phoebe.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Phoebe Plouffe. I am the third and last new community planner to NV cog. Um, I live in West Hartford and I have been working on housing stuff so far. And I'm very excited to get out and work with the communities more and learn about what you're all doing. Um, I've been assisting with affordable housing plans and housing needs assessments, so I'm excited to look at what you all have for that. I know I've heard a little bit of talk about it tonight, um, but it's good to meet you all and I can't wait to work with you all soon.
Welcome Phoebe, glad to have you.
Mr. Chair, there's one more person I wanna introduce to everybody who you've interacted with without knowing. Um, Desera Blanchard is our communications and community engagement corridor coordinator. And I just wanted to give her a moment to say hello and talk about what her side of the organization does. Cause it's, it's not hidden, but it doesn't get the light that it deserves, so I just want you all to be able to say hello.
Hi, good evening, like uh, SN said, my name is Desera Blanchard and I'm. Communications and Community Engagement Coordinator with NV cog. I've been with NV cog for about two years, but never had the pleasure of um, sitting in on any of the RPC meetings, so. Really fortunate to be able to hear a lot of the works that are going on in your towns and super excited. Um, like SN said, I, I think I share her enthusiasm when it comes to our towns and being able to support any way that we can, so. If there's any communication needs that you guys have or any engagement pieces that you need for the work that you're doing. Please, I, I um, encourage you to invite me to come out or to join UNSN for coffee, just to have a chat. Um, truly am super excited and love and uh, love to support our towns any way that we can and so. And also I'll be in the background doing Zooms from now on, so if you guys have meetings, I will be the new Rich Crowder.
Thank you Desiree. And, and we have uh, Drew.
Yes, hi, I spoke earlier, but I'm the uh, Director of Municipal Affairs. I hail from Derby originally, so I'm very familiar with the lower valley. As Ginny stated, you know, that's a lot easier for me to, sometimes those things resonate with me a little bit more, but I'm really focusing on. The northern part of our region just for that exact reason. I already can tell you everything there is to know probably about Derby, Shelton, Ansonia, Seymour. I really wanna know about Watertown and uh, you know Plymouth and some of these towns up here that I'm not as familiar with, so. Kind of spending a lot of time in the northern part of our region, but really working kind of directly with the CEOs. On whatever their initiatives are and, and trying to help uh, you know, get funding from the state and the feds for things that are gonna, that'll help everybody make their lives a little bit easier.
Thank you very much. Nicole, I think we've covered everybody, right? Thank you very much for inviting these wonderful people to attend our meeting tonight. Um, this, I, you know, I started off, I said, I think this is gonna be a quick meeting, but it's been very. It's been a very informative meeting and I think we've uh, we've got a, a better sense of direction. So Savannah Nicole, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question? Has, has staff um, checked to see which members ha- are on the ballot for reelection in November?
Oh, ours.
Yeah, I, I'm on the ballot for reelection and uh, so is our vice chair, so. Emily, I hope you registered to vote in Shelton.
I am, don't worry.
So fair warning, this may be my last meeting. You never know how the winds are gonna blow sometimes.
I, I hope not Ginny, I really do.
Mr. Chair, this is uh, Gino. I'm out also on the ballot um, in November. But I'm uh, running for mayor of Derby on the Republican ticket, so this might be uh. You know, we'll see what happens here in November, but.
We could be losing some wonderful. Congratulations Gino.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that anybody would like to mention at this time? If not, I think we've accomplished quite a bit this evening, as I said, and I will uh, call the meeting adjourned.
Have a good night. Good night.
Savannah Nicole, thank you very much for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know how much it means to me, so.
You mean a lot to us.
We'll take you out for coffee.
Yeah, for sure.